This meeting of the years in City Council, I come to order the Chair calls on City Clerk Ivan Nelson for the roll call.
Councilman Harris.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Avery.
Here.
Ancles.
Here.
Stewart.
Here.
Cannon.
Here.
Reed.
Here.
We have a quorum present, the meeting is open for business, and I'm going to ask Councilman Williams to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for the opportunity to come together today. Father, we thank you for having the capacity and the ability, Father, to attend to the business of the city, Father, and we ask that you will guide us, that we will exercise wisdom and stewardship as we deal with both the resources and the people associated with the city, Father. And with all that being said, Father, we give you all the glory, the honor, and the praise for us in Jesus' name we ask it all. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I believe they roll.
We got somebody creating a disturbance out in here.
I thought you weren't gonna give us a roll tide.
Roll tide.
That's somebody else to do that.
There you go.
Where he go?
Okay. Chairman, entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session in council meeting on January the 3rd.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, do you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
Chairman, entertain a motion to ratify payment of the accounts for the week of December the 30th through the January the 5th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclaimations, Mayor. Unfinished business, we have none today. Number nine, this is a time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of an ordinance adopting 2009 edition of the International Property Maintenance Code. This regulates the conditions and maintenance of all property, building, and structures to ensure safe, sanitary, and fit conditions for occupancy and use. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this ordinance? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of it? The ordinance was presented today for the first reading, and the council will vote on it next week. Ten is a resolution supporting revision of the Civil Service Act. This urges the local legislative delegation to amend Act 671 to provide for hiring, discipline, and discharge of the police and fire chiefs by the mayor with the approval of a majority of the City Council. Chairman, entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Mr. President, I just want to say, I think I've probably voted on three, maybe four of these, and hopefully this is going to be the last one. Our legislative delegation has got to come to their senses. Sooner or later, you keep hoping and praying that they do. If we're the only city in the state of Alabama out of 440-something municipalities to have such an act, and while they're trying to preserve this for the life of me, I can't explain, because if it was that good, then there would be more than just the city of Gaston who have this particular act. I do know that there's several other cities who were similar, situated like we were, but then they had something up to change there. So hopefully, the local delegation will see the need and the sense to change the city of Gaston and bring us into the 21st century.
Mayor, would you like to comment?
Yes, sir, I would. I talked to the mayor of, in West Virginia yesterday. He's a retired policeman, and we were talking about environmental cleanup at our steel plant, and he has the same company that's going to do some work for him, and they used us as a reference. And we got to talk about the budget, there are about 40,000 people, a little bit bigger than us, but same kind of budget, same kind of population. And I asked him what kind of setup they had, and he said, "We have a civil service board." And I said, "Well, it's the fire chief and police chief under the mayor." And he said, "No," said, "Really, I've never seen anybody that has that kind of setup." And, you know, we're the governing body, we know what goes on here in each legislature, and they're all friends of mine. They have different portions of the city, but only one has the full portion, that's the senator. But it's $20 million budget almost from both departments, and approximately 240-something employees. And it's been very costly over the years when there's problems, and I think everybody can see just from the short time that Captain Harbin's been in there, how much cooperation we have and how things are going. And we desperately need this to take effect. The legislature goes in session on the 7th. And I would also hope that the civil service board would look at what's going on now and maybe even hold up on doing anything until the legislature goes in session and see if they won't decide to pay this bill since we've asked them to several times. And nobody wants to get the money out from under the civil service board, that would never be an issue with anybody, as far as I know, unless they just got out of Bryce.
Yes, I'd just like to say that we're encouraging the legislative delegation to meet with us. If they have questions, or if they have a difference of opinion as far as we're concerned, meet with us and let us iron out whatever those problems or situation that you may be questioning as to why you would want to keep this type of civil service board in play. Just meet with us and let us answer your questions, and see where we're coming from, and we'll explain to you why we feel the way we feel, and you can tell us what you want to do, ask us questions, but please, this is a plea to you all to meet with us and to see our side of it. Thank you.
Any other? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Eleven is a resolution approving e-verify memorandum of understanding with the United States Department of Homeland Security. This authorizes the Personnel Director to act as the program administration for the e-verify program for the city, to verify the employment of eligibility of employees after hire is required by law. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
No, that's okay.
Clerk, you take the vote.
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
We have one no, motion carries to adopt.
Twelve is a resolution authorizing agreement between the City and Alabama Department of Transportation. This is for preliminary engineering, right-of-way acquisition, utility, and construction for lighting on Airport Road at Iron Gray Drive. The project is fully funded by federal funds, and the amount is $475,000. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Thirteen is a resolution authorizing agreement with Jones, Blair, Walrup, and Tucker and Edgewall County Commission. This is for professional services for Phase One of the Stroud Avenue drainage improvement project, and the amount is $19,200. County is responsible for half the cost. Chairman, entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
First reading, ordinance amending fiscal year 2012 budget. This is to reflect receipt and appropriation of $475,000 from ALDOT on the Airport Road lighting project approved earlier. What is the pleasure of the council?
Mr. President, if there's no objection, I'd ask that we suspend the rules to vote on this.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Make a motion for approval.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I mean, we got, they gonna give us the money, so we might as well get it while we can. Sometimes they say the check is in the mail, but I, so let's get it right quick.
Is there any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
New businesses, are there any new business?
I have one, Mr. President, coming from the Legal Department, 002.1. It's an ordinance amending fiscal year 2012 budget to reflect grant funds in the amount of $1,000 received from Walmart for the Fire Department's car safety seat program. Ask for unanimous consent to consider.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any other new business?
Mr. President, I have another from Legal Department, 001, requested by the Fire Department. It's a resolution authorizing application and acceptance of grant from Walmart to the child passenger seat program in the amount of that $1,000.
Second.
Unanimous consent.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Okay, move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Thank Walmart.
Yes. Yes, Mr. President, this is for, car seats for needy, the people who really need.
Any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any other new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have a couple of items here. Legal Department, number 010, says, "Resolution authorizing agreement between the City of Gaston on behalf of the Edgewall Gaston Metropolitan Planning Organization and Sane Associates for the Gaston-Edgewall Bicycle Pedestrian Plan." I'd like to make a motion that we consider that today.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt. Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, this is again, an agreement with Sane and Associates, between Sane and Associates and the Gaston-Edgewall MPO, essentially developing a pedestrian, bicycle, and pedestrian plan. I think the total cost is $100,000, $100,000 with there being a $20,000 match that's going to be spread out amongst the MPO members.
Is there any other discussion?
I understand all the other cities are on board with this now, so that's good.
Okay.
I think the key word there was "now."
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any other new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we consider today. Ordinance 009, amending city code section 118-129 to designate Cherry Street between Third and Fourth Streets as a no parking zone.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second. I hope this will get rid of the congestion in that block there, there's a lot of doctor's offices down there, and it gets to the point where you can't get up and down the street for the cars parked on the street, so hopefully this will eliminate that. Is there any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any other new business?
Yes, sir, Mr. President, I have one final one. This is Resolution 005, appointing members to the Commercial Development Authority for terms expiring December 31st, 2014. Make a motion that we consider this today.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt. Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any other new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have one here. This is a resolution authorizing certain preliminary matters, including issues of preliminary official statements to issue warrants, so I'd ask for unanimous consent to consider.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Okay, I'll put that in form of a motion.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Basically, what we're doing today is approving the preliminary statements dealing with the refinancing of the Series 203B warrants, the Series 204A warrants, and the Series 202A warrants. We've pretty much got everything in order now, and what they're doing now is putting the paperwork together for the bondholders to make sure that when they do pull the trigger, everything will be A-OK. I think we're at that threshold in the market that we set as far as our savings is concerned, but we've got to do our paperwork now to make sure that when they do pull it, everything will be in order.
Is there any other discussion?
Essentially, what we're doing is refinancing some bonds at a better rate, which is going to save the city some money.
Any other?
I got dibs on the first $200,000. I got project already scoped out for it, but anyway, go ahead.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any other new business? Department reports, committees, boards are in it.
The chief's gonna...
I'm Steve Carroll, Fire Chief of the City of Gaston. Council has asked for coming to give a report concerning...
Concerning the ISO rating of the city, and recently, we went under an ISO audit back last fall, and through the support of the mayor and this council, and acquiring a new fire station at the airport, and purchasing the equipment and other essential issues, I'm proud to say that we finally lowered our classification to the lowest it's been in the City of Gaston in its history. We went from a Class IV to a Class III, which will take effect in April, and how that affect the general populace is that it would lower from 0% to 2%, depending on your insurance company and your loss policy that you have with your insurance companies, could lower your rates as much as 0% to 2%. So I think that's something to be admirable about. It's been since 1982 was the last time we were audited, so I think this is a good move in the right direction, and I think that the city needs to be applauded for that, so... The other thing is, we recently went through a Toys from Santa program, the Fire Department sponsors a Toys from Santa program during Christmas time, and recently, we raised $15,000 in relation to that, and was able to give $12,000 of that to Salvation Army to help sponsor those children that they had already taken applications for. And in addition to that, we also were able to help 50 additional children that had made application through us that didn't make the original application processes with some of the other charitable organizations. So luckily, we were able to meet all of the needs and requirements for all of the children that made application for us, so everybody should have had a good Christmas. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes.
While you're up, I want to publicly, again, thank you and the Fire Department for the job that was done on Tuscaloosa Avenue the other day. They were, there was a house fire, and they were able to contain that fire into one room. The other thing about that was that the city had installed smoke detectors throughout the city, and this was one of the houses.
That's right.
And I think the family said that's what alarmed them, was the fact that that smoke detector went off. And so, again, we want to thank the Fire Department for their fine work in putting the fire, but at the same time, seeing the foresight to go out and put smoke detectors in those homes, so we appreciate you guys.
And that's a continuous program. If anyone needs a smoke detector, we'll certainly try and get them one installed in their facility. We'll actually go out and install it for them if they cannot do it themselves.
Right.
In this particular case, we had installed that.
I just wanted to say, she told me that the Fire Department did come out and install that one, so that was, that was great, so we really appreciate that.
Thank you, yeah.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Mr. President, I'd just like to reach out to the Gaston Times and make sure that, as I understand it, the story was reported on today in today's paper, but the program, I'm not sure how much we addressed the specifics of that program.
It had a small segment in there about the program and to contact, but they don't.
Oh, great, that's good.
So want to encourage people, if you didn't read that, to read it and become familiar with that program, to see how that may benefit you.
Any other department reports? Marks by the mayor of the council, you want to start, Ben?
Sure. Chief, I want to say to you that after being in the insurance business all the years that I was, and started off with a Class V here in town, and to see the progress that y'all have done in this number of years is unbelievable. Let me say, as a landowner, homeowner, I really appreciate, and I think the people of Gaston are going to see that coming down the pike too, but we do appreciate it. Salvation Army, I'm on that board, and you won't ever know how much that board and the Salvation Army appreciates the work that y'all do, you and all your officers in the Fire Department. Roy, I guess I just got to say it straight to you, I appreciate you. The morale in that department is unbelievable, the way it's going now. I can't believe the difference, but I can see it every day, and I want you to know how much I appreciate you and how much I appreciate the officers. I don't really have to tell them, they already know it, but I ought to say it every once in a while. And I think the shooting in Alabama City the other night proved the restraint and the training that those officers have had and are getting, and your cooperation. I appreciate it a whole lot, I really do. That's all I have.
Got it. Thank you, Mr. President. Roy, I do want, Chief, I do want to tell you that I do appreciate all the men you had out there Sunday morning between 2:00 and 3:30, and how professionally they all acted. They was getting shot at. I was laying in my bed that night, and I could hear the gunshots going off. My radio, my city radio went off, and I heard what was going on. I heard every step the guys made, how they got a perimeter around him, he was shooting at him, we didn't have to fire any shots. They was on top of everything that night. From the first gunshot he shot, they was, from the first window he shot out, out of business, he went to the next window, and time he was at the next window, y'all was there, and y'all just had this guy in scope the whole time, and nobody got hurt, and everything I heard was this profession, it couldn't have been any better. The officer in charge, he handled the situation perfect, all the officers handled it perfect. I know we got a police car window shot out, we got one of our cars damaged by a bullet that he shot, but thank the good Lord, no one got hurt, and Gaston Police Force, under your leadership, and the men out there working that night, just acted so cool about it, you know, they never lost composure or anything, they were just as cool as they could be about it. My wife, she was awake when she heard it, and she couldn't, couldn't imagine people shooting at the police officers and then being so cool, you know, trying to protect the citizens out there. And I just really want to tell each and every one of them, I really do appreciate them, and appreciate the job you're doing. That's all we got, Mr. President.
Bill?
I'd just say amen to both of your remarks, certainly in agreement with you. Other than that, all I have to say is roll tide.
I think it's called a spanking, it wasn't a roll. Oh, okay, it was old-fashioned spanking, what it was. I too want to give kudos to the Police Department, it's a big difference, you know, most of the time, people say I criticize or jump on them, but at the same time, when they start doing something good, and I'm also want to say that they are doing a great job, and under your leadership, Chief, they, I can see the difference. I've come in contact with a number of them since you've been there, and there is a big difference. I understand that the Civil Service Board is meeting tonight, I don't think there's anything on their agenda as far as hiring a new chief, I think they're still whittling it down, but they're going to be hard-pressed, as far as I'm concerned, to do a good job, because I understand that there's already a fix on it. People say we supposed to keep our mouth quiet about who, and I'm not recommending anybody. Is that what the law says, Mr. Attorney, before I say something? I can't recommend, right? But I can talk about somebody who you don't want. Is that, do the law allows that?
I don't think they're going to do anything.
Okay, good. Well, I don't want the one they want.
If you have some legislative...
Okay, well, let me put it this way, I don't want the one that I heard they want. And so, hopefully that will give them an idea, but, you know, it's going great, that's all, I'm through with that. Before I say something, I'm going to have to take back.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, just a couple of things. So the redistricting plan was voted on last week, and I do want to thank the council for voting favorably relative to that plan. I think, again, that's going to be a plan that will give us a middle-of-the-road option and a politically neutral option to present to the Justice Department. You know, I do understand that, you know, it's an adjustment from my original plan, but that's part of the compromise activity that I think it takes at times to get things done. So that's, sometimes the part I struggle with, that's politics, but, but again, I think we presented a plan that bore the signature of a number of the council members, so I do appreciate that. You know, we've had some discussions upstairs, and I think it's been alluded to even here today relative to Airport Road and some of the ticket writing and the speeding activity there. Do want to remind the public that that's not a drag strip, that is technically a four-lane industrial highway.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, but there's a start and finish line out there.
You're supposed to ignore that.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I just want to let you know.
Yeah, it is a four-lane industrial highway, which essentially establishes that for the benefit of industry, and once we start to see the true benefit of industry utilizing the road, it'll become more evident why speeding is such an issue, because you'll have industrial vehicles and things of that nature who will be utilizing it, and it will be safety prohibitive, if I can say that, for you to speed. So, again, be mindful of that, and please adhere to the speed limit, and understand and know that that is a point of contention for our Police Department. Traffic issues on 431, for those in the community, and 431 and Meagan and Hood Avenue, for those in the community who do not think that as a council and as a city government, we are looking at that and addressing it, that could not be farther from the truth. With no transportation bill, we're forced to be very creative, so you have the Republicans in Washington to thank for much of the stagnation that exists relative to those, to that funding. But, again, we're coming up with some creative opportunities and some creative options to address those needs. You know, a couple of quick points to note is that we did a study back in 2006, and that was just before the Couso Town Center development, and it was determined that that area was a service level grade four, a grade F, which essentially means that pedestrians are having to sit too long. essentially means that pedestrians are having to sit too long on Meagan Boulevard. Now, you know, again, you know, that's unacceptable, and so we've been mindful of that since two thousand and six, and it's only gonna get worse, and I think it's progressively gotten worse over the last few years. So as a city, we understand it, we know it, and we're doing what we can to try to address it. So, again, I brought that up because I want the public to be mindful of that. If you're out there on Friday afternoons, or any afternoon for all that matter, and if you were out there during the holidays, you know that we have issues, and, of course, we're trying our best to address that. The mayor is very tuned in, very much tuned in to what's going on there. And I think that's it, thank you.
Ben?
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilman Williams, you're right, four thirty-one is a nightmare. There has been, I think the engineering department has told us that there has been, just recently, or there is presently, a study being done to direct the traffic, to change the traffic routing, or the timing, all the way out four thirty-one from Twelfth Street on through to Glencoe. So we're looking for some improvements in that, but that still doesn't alleviate the problem that we have, you know, even though we can put you from Alabama City all the way to East Gaston without stopping on Meagan Boulevard, but at the same time, you know, I'm sitting there on Twelfth Street, or on Springfield Avenue, or someplace else, and I've got to sit there for four minutes. So it is being studied, and I can assure you that the public sure would be glad when that situation is resolved. It is a nightmare. On speeding, and to the chief, thank you for your support in the endeavors that the police department has put into speeding on Payton Ridge and Payton Road. I promise you that we will attack this speeding in those neighborhoods, in our neighborhoods, viciously. And I say that because the speed limit is the speed limit. Now, you know, if you're out on Airport Boulevard, Airport Road, and the speed limit is forty-five miles an hour, it's forty-five miles an hour, it's not fifty-five, it's not sixty. So if you go out there and run fifty-five, sixty, sixty-five miles an hour on Airport Boulevard, when you come down Payton Ridge, you know, and the speed limit is thirty-five, and I would like to see it twenty-five, you're gonna run forty-five or fifty down there, and you're in a neighborhood. Same ones that speed in one area will speed in another. Those that keep the speed limits will keep the speed limits everywhere, so I caution you, I will, and we will continue to be persistent upon speeders in our neighborhoods and our communities. The Martin Luther King Celebration will be next Monday at Convention Hall at six o'clock. And the keynote speaker there will be the Associate Director of the AEA, who has just come into office replacing Joe Reed. I encourage everybody to attend, that function is a free function, go out and help celebrate the birthday of this outstanding man. And since that is the date that I would normally have scheduled my district meeting, we're not gonna meet next Monday, but we will meet on the twenty-third. District One meeting will be on the twenty-third at East Gaston Recreation Center. I encourage you to come out because I think there may be a topic of interest that we might want to discuss, and everybody wants to be involved in it. With that being said, thank you all.
Mr. President, one final thing, I would be very much remiss if I didn't recognize my father, who's in the audience today, so I always appreciate your support.
I think we've seen him before.
Yeah, but he gave him that dirty look, you didn't see that, that's why he went back.
I was looking back there at your father just a few minutes ago, he looks a lot younger than you. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Councilman, I appreciate it.
And John is the one that told us to keep our remarks short today, didn't he?
Yeah. And due to the Martin Luther King Holiday, next Monday, garbage will be collected on Tuesday, and Tuesday's route will be collected on Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday's routes will be picked up on schedule. I'll entertain a motion with your...
So moved.
So moved.